Yeah. Are we ready? Welcome to Thursday, May 5th, 2022, City of Manistee Planning Commission Meeting. It is 7:02. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take your role.
Commissioner Swilinski?
Here.
Commissioner Smansky?
Here.
Commissioner Humberto?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Oh, yeah.
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitlam?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda, at this time, the planning commission can't take action to approve the May 5th, 2022 agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
Second.
By Shelley, discussion? None, please take your role.
Commissioner Swilinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest? Is there any member on the commission that has any conflicts with tonight's agenda? None?
No.
Thank you. Approval of minutes? This time, the planning commission can approve the April 21st, 2022 meeting minutes. A motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve that April 21st, 2022 minutes.
Motion by Marlene, second.
Second.
By Mick, discussion? None, please take your role.
Commissioner Swilinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Correspondents, is there any correspondence?
No.
None, okay. Chief Glass, he is not here, so we will bypass this if he shows up. Public comment on agenda-related items. Anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment about tonight's agenda? Please come to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address. None? Okay. New business. Dumpster enclosure compliance. First is 399 River Street, Manistee.
So I am 399 feet. My name is Lindsay Swidorski. I own TJ's Pub in the Ramsdale Inn. I understand this dumpster enclosure was approved a couple of years ago. Kind of had a lot going on a couple of years ago as a restaurant, small business owner. Wasn't really on my priority list. I have two issues with this. Number one, my dumpster is in the Manistee Beverage parking lot, so it is not on my property. And James, the owner of Manistee Beverage, does not want a permanent structure in his parking lot. So obviously, that would eliminate a concrete slab, any sort of brick, permanent enclosure. And my second issue is the cost involved in this. I pay close to $20,000 a year in city taxes, and I'm just a small business. And so, I mean, I think Belski got a price of about $1,000 to enclose a dumpster. That does not benefit my business. It's not an investment to me or my business. I understand it's going to be more appealing to the city. In that case, perhaps the city should pay for that. You know, I invested $10,000 in a deck outside that also enhanced the downtown. I was told that the city was getting a grant and that we could possibly be reimbursed for that. That was a year ago. I haven't heard a word about it. So if the city did get some grant money, perhaps they could pay to enclose our dumpsters if it's that important. I just, I'm just not really sure how much I'm expected to pay to be a small business owner in the dumpster. That is a lot of money on top of the massive amount of city taxes that I pay. So I guess I'm just asking to reconsider, or maybe there's another way.
Thank you. Do we vote on each one? Do we motion each one?
That would be appropriate.
Okay. Any comments by the commission? Any thoughts?
The garbage picked up down on River Street now, the buildings that have no back lots. And if they have a full-out dumpster, they put on the ground or like?
You know, I'm not sure.
There are, the city has dumpster and dumpster corrals. However, it's a little bit more challenging for a restaurant business. First of all, they have grease and they have other, and they have a lot more garbage. So typically, they have a dumpster. But the rest of the downtown, or the majority of the downtown, brings their refuge up to the city, closed dumpsters that are on, what is it, Green Bush? Or no, it's on Clay Street?
Parking lot.
In those, in those upper parking lots. But the restaurants, like Blue Fish and, I'm not sure, actually, I'm not sure what, what they do with, talk about it, but a lot of the other restaurants have their own dumpsters because of the issues involved, especially with things like grease. But my, my position is that, you know, it was an ordinance that had existed for a long time, and it was, it originally started with, with dumpsters in neighborhoods where, you know, the neighbors had to look at these ugly nasty dumpsters and had animals and things going in and out of their dumpsters that had us address an existing ordinance. But I don't think it was ever meant to be something that would be a real challenge to them, especially like the, the concrete. I, I think that as long as that it is a non-permeable surface, then the, and dumpster's been on it for forever, we shouldn't necessarily have to have it be a concrete surface. And, and maybe, you know, there is, there is a way of making the enclosures temporary. I can actually show you how it's done because I work with Habitat. And, you know, basically, there are concrete pylons that can hold a four-by-four, and then you can attach the fence to the four-by-four, and that would, that would meet the criteria. So it doesn't have to be an $8,000 item. It could be significantly less than that. And I'd, and I'd be willing to even help with giving you an idea on how to lay it out and design and what you need to buy.
Yeah, just to clarify, we have never said a concrete structure. We've said.
Just going to be a solid surface.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, and then we've, we've said.
Original ordinance had a concrete.
We did, but you guys also asked for leniency within it to existing parking lots if they were permeable. We've also not required it to be made out of like, you know, brick or anything like that. It could be just fencing.
Well, just like Wesco's got theirs is a vinyl fence.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Now, the thing I'm thinking about, where, especially in the case of this one, where it's at, the view of it, I would think maybe just a gate in front of it, because the rest of it would be hidden from view anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will be up to you guys with your motion tonight. I would encourage you to give some description in your motion for the property owner of what you'd like to see.
Well, if I may ask you a question. First of all, as I understand it, your dumpster is in the Beverage parking lot.
Correct.
And we ask you as a city to enclose that dumpster.
Correct.
Now, the person that owns that parking lot doesn't want it enclosed, the dumpster.
And he doesn't want anything permanent?
Permanent, permanent. So if we give you a no, where would you put your dumpster?
I have no other option.
You see what, you see what I'm trying to get at? I mean, we're either going to work with you here, or, yeah, what are you going to do? Put it on the street in front of a restaurant? I don't know. Yeah, so we'll have to.
That would be my suggestion, is that we give them the ability to, which I don't think we've eliminated anyways, to have a temporary structure. And that could be done literally with, with treated four-by-fours, and there are concrete pieces that you can buy that the four-by-four actually fits in, that would rest on the concrete. And then you could use just fencing panels that, that come in four-by-six sections that, that would meet the criteria that we're looking for.
But the problem, Mick, is the man that owns it is the one you'd have to deal with.
Right, well, he's, he's not, as long as it could be taken apart, I don't think there's an objection, correct? He just isn't wanting something like we built up in the top.
Yep.
That would, this would be something that literally could be moved and taken apart.
That's who we'd have to deal with, yeah. If it'd be something that would be classified temporary then or something? Would it be a temporary?
Just do something to screen it.
Understand, but I say the man that holds it is the one we have to deal with.
I can have to talk to him about that, and he's pretty easy to work with.
He's pretty easy to work with?
As long as it can be taken down and it's not permanent, parking lot.
Yeah, but it, it, I mean, as long as your business is there, the dumpster's going to be there. Hopefully, so, I mean, yeah, we don't plan on you moving it, you know what I'm saying? It's going to be there a while, I hope.
What does he do with his refuse? Does he have a container too?
He uses my dumpster, that's kind of the deal we have.
Oh.
I can put it in his parking lot, he can throw his garbage in there.
And, and his garbage is primarily cardboard.
Yeah.
Whereas hers is actually food refuse, and, and there's a difference.
Well, in that case, yeah, as long as you're working together on the same, yeah, I would, yeah, I would think he'd be willing to work.
So do we just kind of table this one? Because Mr. Boudreaux's not here, and we want to talk with him on this. Could you come to the podium, Lindsay, please?
I would think that maybe we could just make a motion that we would accept a temporary enclosure and then have the planning commission, you know, basically, give the final approval. As long as, as it was enclosed from the view, it would meet our criteria.
Well, as I see it, it's back against the wall, right?
What's that?
As I see it, and it's against the wall, so you got, all you'd have to do is a front or?
Yeah.
Yeah, just something in front.
Yeah.
This is straight back on River Street, right? Kind of right, you know, I'd guess that back over five million times.
So this is for the, the planning department. Would this be on a site-by-site basis? Or would we have to assume that any?
Typically, with any kind of permitting, we, we work with the owners. So, I mean, I realize that, I mean, me and Katie were discussing it, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it kind of has to go through the owner because it's on their site. It'd be like.
Or at least when you apply for the permit, having a permission letter from the property.
That's the other way we handle it.
Well, what I mean by this is, I know it's been a hot-button issue, predates my being on this commission. Now, it's starting to be enforced again, and we're already, this has nothing to do with you. We're already getting people in front of us saying, can, can I deviate from this? And, and I, on a personal level, completely agree with the deviation, but I want to know what, what impact it has on the ordinance itself and the enforcement.
There's a stipulation in there that with dumpster enclosures and placement, that they can go and become the planning commission for determination.
Okay.
Now, I, for just the reasons that you list, I suggest that you guys, you know, don't go overboard and be very specific and, and say like why you're granting these, these deviations, if you will, from the zoning ordinance, if you, if you, if there are any. And then, you know, you state specifically like the reasoning behind it. And then you, you continue to look at that as like your guide as to why you should be doing this. Because this will, these will not be the only two.
No.
And it really provides a hardship because there's no property.
Where to have them.
Yeah. As long as he's willing to share with you and no permanent.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, this is, this is a different way of looking at it, though, and I do want you guys to look at it from all angles. I, I realize that this is, is very inconvenient for Lindsay, but at the same time, the other aspect of it, Lindsay might be paying for it, but it's still on James's property.
Right.
So if somebody else comes to you with the same stipulations, like, yeah, it's mine on a different property, just be consistent. Because like what, what I'm saying is like, if this was, if James were to come before you and say, I don't want to do it because I don't want anything permanent.
Right.
Would you be doing the same thing?
Well, that's what I mean about bringing James on board, like Mike, what Mark was saying, to see how he thinks about it. That would be my suggestion.
He's advised to have him send a letter to the, to you at the planning that he has no problem if it's non-permanent, put the dumpster there.
It's whatever you guys would like. Typically, we just ask for anytime there's a development of any kind by another person on somebody else's property, that they give permission to do so.
Yeah. You don't have any authorization from them?
I don't. I've, I've talked to him about it, but I don't have.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
But that, that could also be a stipulation.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, would you be willing to talk to him about temporary?
Oh, yeah.
In front, like even if it's just a gate in front?
Yep, I can talk to him.
Yeah, well, I'd suggest that, Mike, or Mark, I wonder how.
I, I, my thinking anyway, I think this is a special circumstance, so I.
Yeah.
I don't believe we should have anything there, any type of enclosure. My thinking, I don't know what everybody else is.
Then you better tell him that he's allowed to do that.
Well, don't spend it with $20,000 right now.
Well, no.
That, that was actually a motion that they made.
I think we can.
That's fine, you just start.
We can still meet the intent of the requirement by just screening the front. And it would not have to be an outrageously expensive. It would be very.
If they're putting anyone's.
And, and literally, I, I already have it in, in my head.
Where do you go?
Together.
Michael, but Michael building for you.
Have Jim put advertisements on it?
Yeah.
There you go.
What do you, what do you, okay, I'll play the devil's advocate here. What do you do if it's? If it's what?
Temporary structure, winter, how are you going to, are they going to flower on it? What are you going to do?
Well, it is though.
You know, again, if it were, the way I would envision it, if it was the, basically, four, you know, the four-by-four by six-foot-high pole in a concrete base, you'd have two. And then you would have a, the plastic fencing, the two gates, plastic fencing, that would connect to both sides of it, and that would be enough. And, and in the wintertime, it's really just enclosing the front of the dumpster. So it would just be wide enough for them to be able to pull the dumpster out.
I see what you're saying. I do, but, you know, it blows down now. Lindsay's got to send people and take care of it. It, you know, it's, to me, it's a pain, so.
This is probably something we need to talk with Jim a little bit more about, see his feelings on things.
You're not, are, they're not having issues with smell or anything? It's just a matter of covering.
Yeah. We don't have grease. I don't have a fryer, I don't have a grill, so we don't have grease.
Oh, well, yeah, okay.
It's trapped, no.
And it gets in by the weeds. It's never really, it never is an issue.
Yeah, no, I mean, all the outings downtown, nobody's ever really complained about it. Yeah, I think we should bring them on board, Mark, or ask, get some authorization from them, I think, first. I mean, that's my thought.
All right, what is, is that the thinking? So with that, is there a motion?
Before you make a motion, we'd just like to remind, when you guys are looking at these in the future, the goal of this was to screen them from view, as well as to ensure that critters weren't getting into it. So I think that they're accomplishing this with what you guys have discussed, and that could be the consistency that you're looking for when you guys are looking at other, other ones of these.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. What, what do you want to do with what effect one?
It's, it's up to you. I mean, what, what do you want on the?
Well, what I want to do is bring the guy on board so we can talk to him to, and the discussion is, if he's willing to have it a temporary or a permanent enclosure.
Well, we can, we can make the stipulations on what we would like to see. So if it's just a screen, like Mick was talking about.
You guys can all.
Stipulations with the understanding that the owner gives his approval.
Yeah, the stipulation could just be James gives approval.
Right.
Yeah, you're still going to have to ask the guy, very good, it's his problem.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve temporary screening of the dumpster in lieu of an enclosure, based on the approval of the owner of the property.
For just this property?
For just this property, on just this, just the one on River Street. Because again, and, and my justification would be, this is a very unique situation. It is, there is, there is no place for a dumpster to be placed on the property that they own. And so it is quite unique, and it is an essential business part. I mean, you can't really operate a dumpster out without a dumpster.
I think, I think you're good. Is that, is that, are you still making a motion on that?
He's justifying his motion.
Cliff notes on it.
We, we allow for temporary enclosure, or a temporary screening of that enclosure on that property.
So you got it all, Nancy?
I'll put it down to that one.
Of the owner of the property.
With that long motion, is there a short second?
She's still typing.
Marlene, second it. Any further discussion?
Can we read back the motion just to ensure we got it?
I will listen to it and put it.
Okay, all right.
Better that I do it that way. Better I do it without all this stuff. And Marlene did second that?
Yeah, Marlene.
Okay, are we ready now?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Swilinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Oh, yeah, I didn't, didn't sound like my name, yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
No. Next. Next, 84 Division Street, Manistee, 49660.
And Chair, if I may, before we get started on this one, I was not aware that we were not necessarily going to enforce the concrete pad if it was on a, you know, another hard surface. So I believe that is the main reason why we have Larry here, but I will let him continue. I just felt that information was important.
And that, that's my fault, Chair. I, I take responsibility for that. She was not aware of the leniency that the planning commission gave in the original motion like two years ago. That's my fault, though. We've, we've since clarified it.
And we have like four more months to blame deck, we can just.
You guys have until July 1st.
Six months you get to blame.
Yeah.
She's on her probationary period. I'm here for 84 Division Street. It's on the corner of Division and Clay Street, across the street from Ware Hardware. Again, you've answered my, one of my questions that I was coming to hear, to talk to you about. The second one was. Did we get your name? Oh, I'm sorry, Ray Belski, yeah, I'm sorry.
Address too, Larry.
84 Division Street. Okay. Again, I'm, you've answered my first one about the concrete slab. The second reason why I'm here is, is I drew a picture, or actually, a rough draft of what we're looking at as far as where the building is laid out. This is Clay Street right here, and Division Street is right, right here. Of course, Ware Hardware's across the street. My two dumpsters are right here. Of course, when I was here, the concrete, the asphalt, we'll take care of it, so I'm not here for that. What I'm here for is, I know two years ago, you sent this letter out. And in, within those two years, we had COVID and we couldn't do anything. So what I'm asking for is at least one more year to let me find somebody. I had three people bid on it. One didn't show up. One gave me a $6,000 bid, and the other one gave me a $12,000 bid. So, but they said they don't know if they could get it by this year. So I'm, I'm kind of caught right now. So what I'm asking for is if you would extend it for one more year. I'll show you, the picture I drew up is how I was going to lay out the dumpster, dumpster's angle here.
Yeah.
And the fence is going to be here.
You know, again, I, I'm concerned that people see what the city did for a dumpster enclosure and is using that as a model. I don't think that was our intention.
Well, that's not a model. That's just, that's just either a wooden fence or the plastic fence.
Plastic, or even the metal fence with the screening. And, and again, I, you know, I would think that Lowe's could probably give you a bid on a screening, you know, fence. A home plus.
The brewery over here. Right.
My guess is probably Home Depot or Lowe's.
Benard's, rather than Benard's.
Right now, my concern is if you give me an extension for this one.
Sure.
And I, I can speak to that as well. That was something I, I can't remember if I brought it up to this commission, but I did bring it up in a city staff meeting for the police department, that that was a concern that I was getting from property owners, that, you know, they may have a contractor coming out, but it's not, there's, it's not going to be done by July 1st. And I did bring up to Chief Glass during city staff that if properties are under permit and they have their permit posted in, you know, a conspicuous place beside the dumpster or whatnot, that we could potentially delay enforcement. You know, I left that ultimately up to the police department. He didn't really give me, you know, a determination at that time, but it seems that that will be the appropriate course of action for these.
You guys could issue out permits on these, like, or give the guidance to issue out for people that come before you and ask for this, a two-year permit. And we could grant that out for that, under your guidance, so.
Or, or a one-year permit.
Well, you could issue it out now, then he's got a permit, so, for his plan that he comes forward with, and then it's valid for two years.
Okay.
I know some contractors are not putting anything out till 2024 now.
Yeah, I can't find anybody, I'll be honest with you. I have a feeling I'm going to be helping out the senior center.
Senior center, trying to find somebody.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's ridiculous.
Companies, we've been all over, but we finally found someone after Mike here. I was looking for volunteers to come with sledgehammer and put us, because we already have a slab, you know?
Yeah.
But if, if, nobody wants a small job or they're too busy or?
And Marlene, you still need me to do it?
I, I think the reason why they.
Yeah, okay.
I is, they, they don't want to do it, but if we sign it, they'll do it, you know?
It's called volunteering.
And, and like I said, I was just shocked, and that's not a concrete pad either.
No.
That's what I was, so I'm glad you guys changed your opinion on the concrete side. We do have an asphalt slab there, and there is dumpsters there. They've been there for eight years, so it's, it's been existing. And we have no food. It's all cardboard or plastic, you know, stuff like that, because it's, you know, so we have no food at all, so. So I appreciate.
Well, I'll make a motion. How long do we extend it for, a year? Would that do it?
Two years.
Two years for the, from.
Is that, well, before, before you make a motion, is there any other questions from Mr. Belski from the commission?
Oh, he's got a.
Okay. Okay. I have no more questions, no?
No.
No questions.
When you put the ordinance all together, when we worked on it before, was there a time limit? And, you know, with any stipulations before we go ahead and change a timeframe?
Usually, permits are valid for one year within the city, but you guys can stipulate a longer period, so.
One more thing too, on the permits, are you going to waiver the fee too?
That was the original, so if you come before. If you've come in before July, yes, the, the.
Who, did that come to you? Come to you, okay. So what do I do?
You have a site plan, and then you just apply for it, showing like the height of the building.
Basic.
Yeah, basic, very basic.
We're not, we're not engineering plans or anything, you know, we just want to help everyone.
Will this be okay?
It's, it's a little large.
Maybe take a picture of it and send it to me. I won't be able to file it, yeah.
Half, I love it, it works.
I'll never fit the envelope.
But, yeah, you guys have the ability to just, you know.
That with the issuance of his permit, it would be valid for two years.
Yeah, and we'd ask if, if they come before you guys grant that, that leeway.
Yeah, and it was all that to do with COVID, so, that's what he wants, let's give it and move on.
So is there a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
I made it, I'll second.
Okay. So the motion is, Roger?
The motion is to extend the permit for Mr. Belski at 84 Division Street for two. years for cover of, for enclosing the dumpsters in the back southeast corner of the parking lot.
Off Clay Street.
Off of Clay Street.
And waive the fee.
And waive the fee.
If before, if the permit is requested before one July?
If.
First.
July 1st.
Okay. We got it.
Are you good at that, Bob?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion? None? Please take roll.
Who is the second Bob did right?
Sorry?
Bob.
That's okay. Commissioner Swinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're moving into whole business. Be a goodie. 314.
I don't know the procedure here, and I am the owner of a lay school.
There will be an opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting.
Uh huh.
314 Sibbent Street.
It's actually right after this business.
So the applicant can come, please, come to the podium. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Glagola, and is for 314 Sibbent Street. Good to see you guys. I'm here for, I guess, request for determination, is that right?
You're requesting a termination on it? No, no, you're requesting.
Determination.
The approval of.
Yeah, the approval, right. The approval of this, I think I've satisfied everything that you guys asked, and I'm anxious to get started on this.
And, and I can go over the items that were requested of Steve at the last meeting where he presented his application. Just give me one moment here.
Thanks, Katie.
I'm sorry, I had my email out.
I don't do too well in these oral things, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, so the main items of concern were landscaping, lighting, materials, and final rendering, signage. We had questions on the balconies and an environmental assessment. Steve has indicated that there, the landscaping that is on the property is to be maintained as existing. The green roof is just going to be kind of white space at this point. And then if residents are desiring certain things, then he would come forward for an amendment if that's required to incorporate, you know, whatever furniture, plantings, or whatnot they might want on the roof. He has also indicated that lighting is not going to be included at this time. From what I understand, there are some pretty ample streetlights in that area, so he felt that, you know, light, exterior lighting was not necessary at this time. The materials and final rendering has been provided. Those site plans were included for you guys, one with, you know, showing examples of what materials will be used. And then the rendering is still very similar to what you had seen previously, but I think the materials help with the visualization of what that will look like when it's finished. And then signage, still there is no proposed signage. I know there was a bit of discussion on that, and that is something that he will bring forward if and when commercial businesses fill those spaces, so that they can have, you know, full reign of what they would like for signage. The balconies and awning, I did verify with the city attorney that we cannot surpass property lines. Steve wanted to give it one more shot, so he provided two plans, one with balconies, one without, just to get that before you one more time, but the city attorney has, you know, confirmed that that would not be allowable. And the last item is the environmental assessment, and I did a thorough review of that. It looks like, you know, out of everything that they tested, everything came back good. They tested the floor drains, exist, there's a existing underground tank, but it had zero, you know, red zero for what they read for, and that the building would be pre-approved for demolition activities. So the environmental assessment didn't find anything.
You say underground? It's not underground.
It's, it's not? I thought there was one underground.
No, it's.
Oh, oh, right, you're right. It's not underground, but yeah.
We have somebody set up to do that.
Yep, it does say that specifically, that.
There's some underground things that were shown on there.
Yeah, he ran it, there was no oil. He ran everything, the guy was here, ran everything.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't expect oil there.
Yeah, it was pretty clean. Obviously surprised me that, I, I thought there might be some trays, but zero.
Yeah, no, they didn't have all the cars, they were just a junk store, yeah, basically.
And I will also note that I don't believe there were too many aspects of the narrative that changed. One item that I did see was that the runoff calculations had changed slightly, but they were lesser, which, you know, obviously if the Site Plan Review Committee didn't have any issues with the previous runoff calculations, it's safe to assume that they would not have an issue with the lesser runoff calculations. And then I know, Steve, when you were before the Planning Commission previously, we did not have the Site Plan Review Memo available. That is included with your packet now, and it was, you know, very, very basic comments from the Site Plan Review Committee. They did want no parking signs added on the doors. I believe that was discussed and addressed at the last meeting, that, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the consensus was that that would not necessarily be something that, you know, is truly necessary. But, yes, so those are the comments. And then I guess I could also point out on the site plan, it does look like there was just a couple.
Yeah, I got you.
These curb cuts were added, so that was just a little bit more description of what was included on the previous site plan for the exterior.
I don't think there's a curb.
There's no curb.
There's no curb.
Maybe, okay, so that might be when they're going to do Fourth Street.
We'll incorporate.
They'll incorporate, okay.
Exactly.
Got it.
And we'll make it, we'll make it right.
They're widening that, right?
Well, they're redoing it someday.
Supposed to be this 12, according to.
Twenty-four.
Oh, he said this year, oh, okay.
Well, and it may, I mean, things, things do change, but I thought it was a 24 plan.
He has a 36-month calendar he works.
Oh, my goodness, okay. Yeah, I'm sure he did, the roads are pretty bad.
And then there are also two large scale copies of the site plan on the table over there, if any commissioners wanted to take a better look at those.
Katie, I just have one question. When you said that, the attorney said that they, the balconies could not extend the property line. Is the property line the same as the edge of the building, or is there?
Pretty close. Right on the line.
Yeah.
But the thing is, the roofies already extend over.
But those are existing non-conforming structures. To add new would be, you know, furthering the non-conformity.
These are big, they're a big thing, and.
There. So I was, if you're drawing, it looks like there's, like you've replaced it with sort of a Juliet balcony, is that the intention, or?
I mentioned earlier today, should I talk about that? It might be a minor amendment. We may, I think we talked about last time, maybe push them in, but I have to redesign the interiors.
Oh, to recess.
So.
So you still get a balcony, but it's recessed.
Yeah, I mean, really, our recommendation for Steve is to proceed tonight, and then if he wants to amend those later.
Yeah, I didn't know about it until tonight, so.
And I think you're going to find that the cost is going to be, not, it's not going to, it's not going to be in the same level of cost as putting a balcony in the outside. What you're trying to do.
It's just a cantilever. They have on the drawings, I think they have the cable, that really wasn't going to be there. It's not necessary, you know.
You're not involved in any roof-type environmental work upon, like a garden's on a roof?
That's in the future for the, I'll let the tenants decide that, you know. And when they bring a plan, then it'll be a minor amendment later.
Yeah, Roger, the roof will be accessible at this point and be a clean space, so at this point in time, you know, tenants could potentially, I don't know, take a chair up there and read a book, or put a blanket down.
Yeah, they decorate it out.
And we'll, everything, everything we do will bring, will bring through. Anything that changes, we'll bring it through.
Yeah.
And if, yeah.
All right. Yeah, that's, okay, I mean, good.
Just hoping, you know, I'm hoping we can get started. And that, oh, I guess, well, if you do approve, I guess, I'll wait.
Let's do one at a time.
All right, thank you.
So can, can they have canopies, or are those, can't have balcony?
No.
Can't have a canopy either. I know there's an existing non-conforming awning, I believe, on the building. Any, no, okay, yeah, any awnings or balconies, nothing can project from the property line.
Nothing's over the right of way. Other than the eaves, you know, the eave that's on that steep roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, and that's about the height.
Something tall driving.
Maybe we could, maybe we could convert that into the, you know what I mean? That's extension.
Well, you never thought, I mean, there's a lot of things.
It's a.
That's right.
I was thinking, well, I was hoping you guys would, you know, but the only, the attorney's thinking about liability, I guess, and I would be fine signing a waiver to the city, but I don't want to push it, push the.
No, it's best if you.
Yeah, we can only go off of what the attorney said, and he said.
Said no.
No.
No. And that's, that's the word.
It's above the, you know, it's above the power lines, it's.
Well, I thought maybe the roof would be your entertainment center, and a lot of.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's the south side, it'd be nice to have outside space. It's an accessory used to the, to the thing. I thought maybe we could allow that, but.
Yeah.
It's okay, we'll work around it.
It is what it is. Okay.
I guess, half a point today, or yesterday.
I'll write it down.
Tell the, Mark, he meets all the parking requirements that we were looking for, or what?
I'll ask Mike.
Oh, Mike, or?
Katie.
Katie, you said he met all the parking.
All the parking requirements?
Um, I believe that parking was something, the parking hasn't changed from the first plan. I can't remember off the top of my head what the required parking was, but I know that it was discussed that what he provided was satisfactory, and with it being a plan unit development, the commission does have the ability to modify or waive some of the parking requirements if they feel what is provided is satisfactory for the development.
I don't think Roger was here last time.
No, I wasn't.
No, it was indoor, we have it indoor.
I see that, I see that. So I mean, as long, yeah, I was surprised, but that makes sense. So, yeah, no, I wasn't, but yeah, that, that's a good idea.
Kind of.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Kind of work with, yeah, whatever we can do to get this going.
Well, you know. We're just trying to make it as.
He did.
Yeah.
And, and Mike did just add that he knew that the requirement was met with the parking that he provided.
Yeah, okay.
And, and I know there was some concern about the way it was set up, and if you guys want to modify that, you could, but I think he meets the requirements of what he needs.
Yeah, well, as long as he meets it, with the number of, you know, people living with cars. But I tell you, we got a house, they moved in next door from Oklahoma, they've got six cars, one family, in the same house. Now you tell me, all of a sudden, the street went from nobody parking on the street to six cars or alternate parking. Fortunately, I have a driveway, so I just sit back and watch them, and it's, but yeah, that's what I said, wow, but they're.
That's the help.
Yeah, yeah, now they're going to sell it because they hate Madison, they're going back to Oklahoma.
Any street in New York.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have anything? No, no. Nick?
I think he, Steve, you've done a good job, you know, following up and taking this from an idea to a plan, so compliment you on the work that you've done to get it to this point.
I'm sorry if I've been a nuisance. I appreciate everything. I appreciate all your help. But this stuff I don't only do, I do the building in. And I used to pay people for this, but I came out of retirement to do this.
Great.
I'm anxious to do the part that I know best.
Pam, you have anything?
My only question is for the metals, it's, you've got listed on here masonry base, stone base, and then metal siding. Where's the metal siding going to be?
Oh, the upper. The stone is below. Originally, it was a warehouse loft space, kind of a brick, you know, we were going to do brick veneer, bricks more expensive than brick veneer. So we split the half, you know, we split it at a, at a point about the door line and window line, and then it's metal above. And all that stuff, as we get the material, you know, as, the problem is with the supply and the volatility of the supplies right now. Be, to order, I will bring those, if you want, we can do a minor, however you want to do that, I have no problem.
Are they going to be these colors?
Pardon me?
Are you using these colors that are shown in the?
They're pretty crummy when you see them that way, I mean.
No, but, but they're similar colors, correct?
Well, yeah.
As long as.
They can change, yes, I wouldn't like to use those colors, but if you guys have some.
As long as the materials are reflective of what is here, I think that the commission would feel comfortable with the planning department okaying very minor tweaks, like I said, as long as it's reflective of the image that we're getting here.
Of the general, yes.
I like the look.
So they're going to give you a general.
Or brown, kind of a thing, yeah. Or tan, or what you call it, so.
That way you're not running back to us every time you want to change the color of brick or.
It's a very common look in lots of towns.
Yeah, thanks, Roger.
Because a lot of it's going to come down to availability of the materials.
Yeah. I know, that's a sad, that's, I've never seen it like this. And I've never seen it like this ever in my history of doing work, the, the difficulty with materials and.
Oh.
They, oh, we have it, then a week later, two weeks, oh, no.
You see that gentleman that, last, what was it, a couple weeks, a month ago, with that processing unit, he's got the ironworks.
Oh, yeah.
The whole electrical pole that went from $70,000 to $900,000.
$900,000.
$900,000, the same pole in a 16-week bid out on a job.
From?
From $70,000 to $90, $900,000.
On what, the steel?
Had to do with electricity.
Electrical pole of some.
Electrical transformers, oh, the transformer.
That's what he said anyhow, that, I don't know.
Well, I have a guy in, well, I don't know if he's still around, but the guy that makes transformers in Russia, and he went to.
Makes it, makes transformers.
Yeah, he'll make, he'll make, we made, we did a cable company and made the transformer because of, yeah.
And then what you do is you.
I should call him up, yeah.
You make a deal.
When you get back.
Yeah, it's, I know some good guys.
He's an electrical engineer out of Moscow, I mean, PhD, yeah, he's a pretty smart guy.
That's going to be everything.
Well, he, we couldn't, we had a similar problem in Chicago about twenty, thirty years ago, and he said, well, I'll make it.
This is the specific.
You can do that, and it was, it meant everything. It was for.
You're okay?
Anyway, yeah.
Anyway, yeah, go ahead.
Great.
Roger, anything else?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay. Any, any other? Okay. No other questions? So, shall we proceed with a motion?
Yes, and if there are stipulations, um, I have a couple of things written down that you guys have been discussing that you may want to stipulate, we'll do it how we normally do. I forgot my little stipulation list for you guys this time, so I'm taking notes, but, um, yes, how we typically do it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, with that, is there a motion? I'd like to hear the stipulations Katie's got before we make a motion.
Okay.
No stipulation.
Um, okay, so, I, this is kind of just doubling down, but the parking provided on the site plans presented at tonight's meeting is sufficient, um, that there are to be no projections of balconies or awnings over the property lines. I just want to make sure that's identified since we do have, you know, um, different site plans. And then, and I guess we could include that, the alternate site plan into that motion as well. I can get that, um, site plan number. And then the minor changes to materials indicated on site plan A four point one demonstrated at this meeting, um, as long as they're, you know, match the general appearance and colors, can be approved by the planning department.
Right, that would be you guys rather than bringing it to us.
Right.
Can, can I ask a question? Well, no, I'll wait till later, it's okay.
And then we can.
Do you have fire suppression or anything?
Yeah, we can go back up to the site plan review committee comments and see if there's any, and we can, you know, stipulate. Um, I think that a good idea for the fire department and city engineer stipulations is that we just give them final approval, kind of how we did at the last meeting, should anything come up in the future. But that can be a, you know, an all-encompassed motion. I think that, um, you know, comments from the site plan review committee shall be satisfied with final approval from those departments.
Right, we always did, city, fire, and health.
Yeah, typically, we have them beforehand, but, um, these ones are, uh.
Kind of, they're general.
Generalized.
Generalized ones, and sometimes when, when, once it gets down to actually opening up the development, um, it has come up that they kind of feel that those things weren't necessary, but we've stipulated them, and then they're tied to the permit, and it creates this, you know, that the fire department has now determined that something's not necessary, but it's tied to the special use, so giving them that final say.
There are a couple of things on here, though, like a Knox box they're going to request no matter what, um, and then, uh, like the fire load separation details.
I put those in.
Okay.
Yeah, I have those in there.
Okay. I think that giving them final approval on that is, is probably, you know, a good thing.
There is a question for you, Marco. How about a dumpster? Now, if this is all built up, does he, does he need a dumpster, first of all?
Yes.
I would think so, yeah.
They would, they'd use totes. This is, they would use totes.
Totes per apartment.
Yeah. We'll probably have to roll them out, you know, roll them out from the inside.
It's either, or we can't, if, if one's not shown as, as far, then there's, we assume they're using totes, but if you, uh.
The zoning ordinance requires that you have adequate refuse disposal facilities for your development. It does not necessarily require what those are.
Right.
Now, if it were to become an issue, that could, you know, potentially, and this is just speaking in general, it could be a violation of a permit if you're not providing adequate refuse disposal, but we don't necessarily get into the nitty-gritty of, you know.
Always doing it.
Yeah.
Now, if you feel that, you know, one should be on there or you want one, then that's a stipulation that you could put in for public health and safety, but.
If this is built out, right, that there's edges, I mean, where's he going to place, uh?
Well, we, we have it, we have a little spot in there.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, we do, it's on the plan, um, I think it is on the, behind the tenant, the empty tenant to the north on the civic.
And, and just to, just to be clarified, like, without any commercial tenants in there, um, at this time, like, you might see it come in as an amendment later, because as, you know, whatever goes in there, they might need a grease trap or other things, and then he'll have to bring them in, so.
Well, I mean, just, now we're dealing with that girl, I just thought I'd ask if.
Nope, it's a good call.
Good catch, Roger. Probably change to a residence if you had to.
Meanwhile, I'm still like the idea of the coffee shop. I'm hoping we can get somebody in there for the coffee.
Yeah, that's right, downstairs you were talking.
Yeah. I don't know if there'll be any grease, but there'll be coffee, you know.
They're still working on that?
I would like to, yeah. Fresh roasted coffee. I don't think Manistee has it.
All right.
And can you remind?
They have that line down in Parkdale where you can drive through.
Yeah, that's not fresh roasted on a daily basis.
I don't know.
Pam?
Can you remind me how many, how many units are going to have in your room?
There's, um, there's twelve, twelve on the, on the upper floors, and then two loft spaces on the, you know, on the bottom floor.
Okay.
North, uh, they're one bedroom, one bath with a little loft. There, you know, you could almost, you could convert them into two bedrooms, but it'll be one bath.
But twelve?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, twelve plus this two, that's fourteen.
So, fourteen total.
Two one bedrooms and then twelve two-bedroom, two-bath, yeah. I think that's right. And, uh.
So, did somebody make motion, or?
Yeah, and you got workers.
We're still reading stipulations.
You've got workers to do this, or a team?
Yeah, yeah, I've been holding them off, and they're working on other things now, yeah, we were hoping, we were hoping to be.
Can, can the motion really that the site?
Good for you.
So, motion? I make the motion that we approve the stipulations of the stuff Katie stated, along with the, the site review committee stuff, the, they have the final say-so. And the house planning department has the say-so on the change of materials. Stipulations, wasn't it?
Yep. Yeah, no balcony.
Yeah, that way you don't have to keep running back to us.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, this is a long committee time, I've been here, yeah.
Can we get a, a little bit more in the motion as far as, like, the site plan that's approved tonight?
And I can, what I had stated, if you'd like to.
To just help out, maybe, and then we can use that as a motion, because, uh, we want to, we want to make sure that it's, it's the site plan that was demonstrated tonight.
And specific enough that we always say if we were all gone, someone could come in and look.
Ten years from now and be like, this is what was required.
Yeah, I think they're dated, well, you can do my submission dated from the day, what was that, what, forty-seventh?
So, a motion to, um, that minor changes to materials and colors, um, demonstrated on A four-one site, the A four-one site plan presented at this meeting, um.
On May fifth, twenty twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Uh, the site plan review committee.
Yep.
Uh, has final, uh, the fire department and, uh, city engineer DPW have final, um, approval of the site plan and permit. And then, um, the, uh, that there are no projections over property lines, including balconies.
I thought it was two different site plans, right, A and or B or something?
There was an alternative. Oh, right, yeah, well, um.
Well, there's a, there's an eleven by seventeen.
Right, but we can just identify the one site plan that will be the final.
Yeah, because that way, you've got the two different site plans, you can label one one and the other one a second.
Well, the one without the.
Specify which of those site plans we're using.
Is the one that is approved?
It's the one without balconies that will be approved, and then we will also.
Well, there's.
A three-two, is that what you say?
Put the floor plan in too, remember?
Yep, A three-point-two and A two-point-two.
Yeah, A three-point-two, yeah.
We'll specify those plans in there.
A two-point-two and A three-point-two.
We've got that one nailed down.
And then we're going to scan this in when we, when we do the permit, so it'll be really clear, but it's nice to have those, those designations on there, so.
Yeah, it's really helpful.
Yeah.
I have a digital.
That's even better than the scan, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably from the.
You have the number to plan and the date of the plan.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we ran in the issues where we've looked at plans that are ten years from old and looking at minutes and trying to figure out, so this really clarifies it, so thank you, guys.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. I'll second that motion.
Does there have to be a third?
I don't think he said it's with the motion.
Well, I, can I ask a couple of questions? Do you mind?
We're in the, we're in the motion now.
Oh, we're in a motion.
Talk about ten things.
So, okay, let's, let's drill down on this, okay?
Yeah.
We have Nancy summarize what we gave for the motion.
All right, let's see how much I've got of this. Your motion was to approve the stipulations as Katie has read, which are to, to include the ability for the planning department to have the final say on the materials, for any minor changes to be done with the materials. To have the fire department and the city engineers have final approval of the site plan and the permitting. There will be no projections over the property lines, and for the site plan A two-point-two and three-point-two to be approved.
Can you add the date of those site plans?
Yeah.
Date of the site plans.
Which one did you say?
A two-point-two. A two-point-two and A three-point-two, right, you said that.
Is that the entire moment?
May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
That'll match.
All right.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that I missed?
Parking is sufficient.
Yeah, parking was.
Has submitted on these plans.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the plans.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
So, drawing A two-point-two is just for, uh, the floor plan.
Correct.
Okay.
And A three-point-two was reflective of the rendering without the balconies.
Is there anything else that, like, one floor only, A two-point-two?
So.
It's first and second.
Is that good for you, Bob?
Yeah, you got Matt, do that, adding that date matches what I wanted.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
With that, the motion by Bob second.
Don't second.
Roger.
Roger. Any further discussion? None?
No.
Please take roll.
Commissioners Lewinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride? Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved. Congratulations.
I'll get out of your hair, get to work. Um, can I, but I had a couple of questions, just a couple real quick. Can I, just, it's just about putting a trailer and a fence around that temporary while I'm doing the construction, a construction?
That is, construction fencing is a lot, we can talk about it after.
All right, and then, and then the other thing would be just, if I, if, is there any chance of ever, is there any way to go, is there a procedure to, uh, to get those on balconies that I like so much?
We can talk about that more later, Steve. We, we'll talk about that more later.
Buy more property.
Thank you, guys.
Buy more property around.
Yeah, there you go.
Cross the line.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
You? Moving along, public comments and communication. This time, the chair can ask any comments from the public. If you would like to come up.
Yes.
A comment, name and address, please.
My name is Susan Wilkins. Property I came here to speak about is seven-two-three Casio, painted lady, saloon. It's back to the dumpster issue, I guess.
Do you, uh, put this back on the, um, hold on a second?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, so anyway, so by July first, right, so we have a grease and a dumpster, you know, we have garbage and, and the grease, so they both have to go in the same closure, or the grease doesn't have to be.
Um, this is, well, I just want to provide a little bit of clarification for you. I'm the zoning administrator, and typically, at this point, it's public comment, it's not always necessarily appropriate, and nothing again, it's nothing with your particular request for them to, yeah, no, you're totally fine, for them to answer questions, it's more so a comment period. So, I'll give you my card, and you can call me first thing next week, and we can discuss any questions that you have. Does that sound appropriate, Chair? Okay.
That okay?
I just had a question on the.
Oh, probably, take it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can, we can answer those if.
The answer would have been yes.
Yes.
Well, the, we'll, we'll talk here.
Who's not familiar with procedures, you know.
All right.
All righty, Marco.
No, you're fine. Thanks for coming. You know, a lot of people won't show up in person to, you know, address these issues, so go for it.
And then we have, uh.
Geez, it was nice.
I mean, we eat there a lot, so we don't want to make you mad.
Sorry, I better leave.
That's right.
Yes, we'll try.
It was in the newspaper.
And then, if, honestly, I think the meeting is going to wrap up here quick. If you wanted to sit around, we'll, like, be able to answer your question.
Oh, okay.
Staff reports.
Um, I do not have anything for you at this time.
Okay.
Uh, I don't have anything either, Mark.
Nancy, you have any?
I have nothing. Summer finally going to come? Summer, somebody order summer.
That was your department.
I'm ready.
It's on back quarter.
Yeah.
All right. For discussion, we're going to start with Roger, because I know he's been seething down there, so.
I'm not, well, okay, all right. But two, I've got two points. One, now, I don't know if you notice the signs, the, as long as you head north on the highway across the bridge, Amor's got two signs for availability. Now, I don't know if it's right for them to put a sign up there to say space available, or if they have to have a right to put a sign up there.
So, those are MDOT approved signs, we can't do anything about them. Any signs that you see within the city, like on the roadways, that have a number plate underneath it, are actually permitted through MDOT.
So, they're, so that's all available, they're just looking for somebody to pay the money to put that up.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, of course, that hospital's sitting empty, it's bothering me. You got, somebody's got to talk to them, do something there.
That and the civic club, that's two.
Oh, yeah, that civic club's.
We could, we could ask the, uh, the, um, economic development.
Yeah.
Um, person to come in and speak on that.
Why don't they turn that into apartments, for God's sake? Everybody's took apartment, where's that guy? No, he left. That'd be cheaper up there, turn them into apartments.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I know it's a, one of the, the development-ready, um, areas that they've marked on. I thought Filer might have even had something going on there too.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, we could have the, the economic development director come in and see, you know, give you guys a little background of what he's trying to get accomplished there.
Yeah, yeah.
And then that way, um, Katie, if you don't want to call Mark, and. So, well, well, we've got a note of that, we'll, we'll try to get him in here, Mark, for you, or Roger, for you.
All right, thanks.
Steve, Evan, shall we? Pam?
I hate metal siding, just so you guys know.
You don't like it?
I, I, I wanted to go ahead with this plan, but I really hate metal siding. There are metal sidings out there that look nice.
Yeah.
The one that was in his rendering is like.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult for us, because like, you guys don't have design standards that are that, that in-depth, and then it's really, really difficult because the HDC has approved metal siding.
I know.
So, I mean, if your historic district is saying, yeah, go for it, it's really, you know, you know, we have no leg to stand on.
Say that it's not okay outside.
Outside.
Outside, yeah.
Nick?
Outside county barn, I don't care, but in.
Nothing for me, other than you don't have to worry about Amor's anymore, they sold, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that.
Bob? I like that I'm seeing the viber piles going at the Hampton Inn, and they're moving right along real quick with them, they've got.
I see that too, yeah.
More modern viber piles than they used to be. I was watching how fast they're putting these in. I did conduit ones, and they would take fifteen to twenty minutes to do a piling. These guys are doing them under ten.
Is that right?
Equipment, and they're just flying, and they're looking, faster they're going.
Well, that's good.
Stuff there is looking good.
I, I did have my first complaint about the Harvard Hampton Inn today, though. No, they don't like that second driveway going onto Lake Shore Drive, and I went, too bad it's there.
A lot of sand from in the front of face.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, uh.
Are they allowed to pull that?
Well, they have, so we went out there recently as a soil erosion officer, and like, that's a natural dune, so it's, it's extremely difficult for them to keep clear.
Right.
So, we had to move their fence up to, uh, the top of the ridge that they have there, and they were supposed to clean it out once it's fifty percent full. But the, on the bottom, uh, half, if you guys actually, um, well, I know you guys pay attention, but if you, if you look at, after winter time, Jeff comes out there with the DPW, and they scoop it, and they literally put it back in the beach. Um, you know, it's naturally drifting, um, it's nothing that they can do, and they're not causing it, so, um, you know, we had to move their fence, and they're, they're doing what they need to do with the soil erosion, so, but, yeah, the silt fence that was down there was completely over, and I, we were getting calls on it, so, um, but we had to move it, hopefully that resolves it. It's, uh, it's difficult to, uh, you know, control Mother Nature at times like that, so.
She's good.
Difficult to control Mother Nature.
Silver Lake, we're eating on the house.
It's been a little windy.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Is there any movement on the Northern Hotel? It's been.
As far as.
Seven months now. I mean, has anything forward on that, you know?
As far as, uh, after you guys gave approval, yeah, I'm not aware of anything, Mark, so. But they might be gearing up, they might be gearing up this summer, um, like, you guys have heard from many people, try to find a contractor right now. They're, they're impossible.
That's true.
So, I mean, if you know a good one that's, you know, wants to do a, an addition, let me know, I'll let them bid on my house. I can't, can't find one either, so, um, you know, I think everybody's having the same problem, so.
Like I said earlier, contractors I know are not, not putting things out till twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
That's how, never to go on.
Well, and it's also the cost, I mean.
Yeah, that's the truth.
A deck, you, in twenty nineteen, a deck, a, a standard deck for a handicap.
Two hundred square feet.
Was around twelve hundred dollars, now they're three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More than double, well more.
Oh, yeah.
For, for the.
Yeah, my God.
Well, I, I will say that my son lives in Minnesota, though, and they don't have any problem getting stuff done. They, they have contractors knocking on their door practically.
Tell them to move to Michigan.
Right.
They, they all moved out there when they had that, that big blow-up of housing, now they need to move back.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Then they gotta get their Michigan contractor's license back.
That's true.